Bring this work session to order. And I'll start off with. Councilman Batoka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, everybody. I just want to introduce a new intern that we have in the beautiful Second District team, and she lives in the beautiful Second District. Her name is Hannah Swer. Hannah, you want to say, stand up and say hello? Don't be shy.
Hello, Hannah.
Hannah is interning with our team, and she's a Pikesville High student. Thanks, Hannah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No chances. I have one, too, Chair. I have my summer intern, Hamza Mahmoud, from, he's a recent 2023 Towson High grad, and heading off to U of University of Maryland, right? So he's, he's spending the summer with us, learning all about problem rental properties. Welcome aboard.
Okay, we will. Start off with. The reappointment to the Police Accountability Board. We'll start off with some miscellaneous business, get that out of the way, then move on.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. The first item for reappointment is Ms. Renee Strebe for the, as you said, the Police Accountability Board.
Stride.
Stride.
Haven't seen you for months.
It's, it's come up relatively quickly, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, because when the, when the board was first organized, the, the terms are staggered. So Ms. Strebe, Strife, I believe, was, is one of the ones that it was originally a year term, and then if reappointed, it'll be for a three-year term.
Mr. Stride, how are you doing? You want to?
I'm well. How are you?
Great, great. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I've enjoyed my three months so far on the board. I won't go through the, you know, one husband, two kids, two grandchildren, two dogs for you again. But I have enjoyed my time on the board so far, and I'm looking forward to being reappointed for the, the full term.
Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much, and it is my pleasure to once again wholeheartedly endorse Ms. Strife's nomination to the Police Accountability Board. She is an outstanding community leader in Perry Hall, resident of the Women's Club of Perry Hall, active on the Community Relations Council for the Police Department, and many other activities. She is conscientious, fair-minded, and extremely knowledgeable, and I urge a favorable vote on her nomination.
Well, I thank you so much for coming. Any additional questions, comments from the members? Thank you so much for coming in, and we look forward to voting for you Monday night.
Great. Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you. Next, let's move on to the reappointment for the Ethics Commission.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next reappointment, as you indicated, to the Ethics Commission for reappointment is Ms. Cindy Leopard. And Ms. Leopard would serve a term, a three-year term, that would end on June 30th of 2026.
Okay, Ms. Leopard, not here? All right, we'll move right along.
Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to say something on Ms. Leopard's behalf. Go right ahead. Ms. Leopard is a fellow Woodlawn graduate, and she's just an outstanding attorney. She's a person of very high integrity. And I couldn't think of a better person to be in the position that we're gonna, that she's being nominated for. So I would urge my colleagues to view Ms. Leopard favorably. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And another appointment by a person we know and love?
Yes, sir, Mr.
For Revenue Authority?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next appointment or reappointment in this case is the council's consideration of the executive's nomination of Mr. Thomas J. Pedicord Jr. for reappointment to the Revenue Authority for a five-year term. And I'm sure the council has some pointed questions.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Pedicord?
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Well, tell the audience something about yourself, the rest of the people. Certainly. Have a dossier on you about this thick.
That thick, okay, sure. Be glad to. I'll, I'll keep it brief, though. I, I'm a Baltimore County resident, a member of the bar for over 50 years, practiced law in Towson for quite a while, and for the last 25 years or so, prior to 2018, I proudly served as counsel to this body.
Distinguished service.
Thank you.
And we are very grateful for your service to this council and the county, and your work on the Revenue Authority. So we appreciate the briefing you gave us. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
I just wanted to tell Councilman Catch that, that Mr. Pedicord is from my district, the scenic sixth district.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll just say that, Mr. Pedicord, it was quite an education when I was a first-term council member, and you tried to advise me on so many different things, and I didn't listen to you. And everything that you tried to teach me, I forgot. But, but no, I think, I think for those of us that served on this council during your tenure, we are a lot better off than had we not had the experience of getting to know you and listen to your wise counsel, even if we didn't follow it all the time.
Thank you, sir. It was a pleasure to serve this body for many years, and I enjoyed every minute of it, and I miss the people a great deal.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I was a better student, Mr. Pedicord, if you remember.
Sometimes.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Pedicord, for your, your decades of service. I was 37 when I was elected to the council, and you were a mentor to me, and I know you played that role with a lot of folks. So I look forward to the continuation of your public service.
Thank you.
Well, I think some of the best things that, even today, having a conversation with you, you've been here for quite some time, and you are always able to tell us how it happened, when it happened, and who the players were that made it happen. So we certainly appreciate that very much. And, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Look forward to voting for you Monday.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sure. Two votes so far. Okay. Now, while we move on to page eight, to Bill 40-23, the West Baltimore County Redevelopment Athol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, where to begin on this piece of legislation? One, this idea for a West Side redevelopment authority didn't come from myself or even from my colleagues that I served with in the General Assembly, so much as it came from the, the people that reside in southwest Baltimore County, and within the shed that this, this bill and this authority would take over, which reaches down to Route 40, up to Liberty Road, between the city line and between, Rolling Road is a rough idea of where the shed is. Serving as a representative on the, in Baltimore County, in the General Assembly for eight years, and listening constituents, and being as frustrated as they were engaging with the business community, engaging with the same concerns and blight that they saw in their neighborhoods, and asking, what can we do, and why can't we do this? Why can't the county do this? Why can't the state do something more? And oftentimes, and I think some of my colleagues, not all, would agree that we're also frustrated with the answer where it's, we don't necessarily have an avenue, or we don't have a mechanism in which, to assist with that particular issue, with a lot of issues, but particular ones that would have a direct and potentially fast-moving impact, a lot of times we have to go through a process, and that frustrates folks. This idea for a West Side redevelopment authority is born out of that frustration and that engagement with community members, listening and hearing from them and finding what we can do proactively, and what we can do to make sure that their expectation is met for when they know that there's value in a community and know that there's value in our aging economic corridors, that we have a mechanism and a way to assist with redeveloping those areas and investing in our, in our neighborhoods, in our communities. With that, I grew up in this area, and I was able, I was able to see, one, going to school there, shopping there, turning my phone off there, what it was, what it became, and what it is now, but I also know what it could be in the future. And I know that the county has invested in that idea, in this particular shed. So this is about compounding support, not just from local folks, but also from elected officials, making sure that we're using all of our resources to move something forward, and not just taking individual steps to seem like we're doing something, but actually have something accomplished. It was where I was lucky to serve with a forward-thinking group of elected officials from the area, and knowing that Senator Sidnor, who's with us today, put in legislation that approved and authorized the council to create a authority with a very limited scope for the purpose of not getting ahead of ourselves. This is the first time that we've attempted to do something like this, where we create a quasi-government entity to help move redevelopment forward, to work with our agencies and our departments and the Executive's Office and the council to move forward in blighted areas, in areas that have been traditionally forgotten or neglected. I have a lot of hope for what this could be. One, the, the community has as much hope as I do, roots in that area, and hoping to take my kids around to the same places that I used to go to growing up, with new experiences and new things to have memories for that I can take them to. And I know that the folks that live there feel the same way. With that, I can say that with my engagement with my colleagues, and I appreciate the conversation about what this could mean for the rest of us, while this is short, small in scope, out of design, if successful, could be expanded with help, with our help from our allies in the council, excuse me, our allies in the legislature, to expand it potentially to the rest of the county. And taking the example that we've seen in other jurisdictions in Maryland, such as Prince George's County, and also what's been successful with some of the redevelopment corporations, while separate, what the county, what the city has utilized is also what Montgomery County has utilized in the past. But taking what they've already done, and not trying to reinvent the wheel, but do something that works right for us, which I think this council has been very apt, and what I've learned over the last six, seven months, is that we try to do what's best for Baltimore County and do it the Baltimore County way. And I look forward to working with you all in this respect as we move forward, and hopefully get your support with the redevelopment authority and this bill. I think I've monologued enough, and I appreciate the opportunity to introduce it to you and have the conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I will just add a few comments. I guess, thank is so important that we have a redevelopment authority that can be solely focused on a particular area, and that would be their charge, and they will wake up, they can go to sleep every night focused on that one area. It'd be very good to see what could come from it, because I think, I know we can do better when we're focused on one particular area. Any additional questions or comments before we get to the speakers? Councilman Batoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just think this is an outstanding initiative. I think it's great to have the laser-focused vision that, on our west side, along the commercial areas. Appreciate our state partners that are here today, Senator Sidnor, Delegate McCaskill, for everything they do in terms of trying to better the area that we, we all serve. And I'm happy to be a cosponsor, and I appreciate Councilman Young in taking a leadership role on this particular initiative with the council. Good job, Councilman, and happy to be a cosponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sure. Okay, any additional questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, thank you.
Absolutely.
So, Councilman Young, I applaud your efforts on this. I, as the, the council member representing the seventh district, has seen how public-private partnerships can benefit an area. I'm specifically talking about Trade Point Atlantic, and you can see in our district where we had hit rock bottom. The industrial base was gone, the job base was gone, and the private sector, along with a lot of public help, both from the county, the state, and the Fed, came in to support this massive project that ended up creating, I think we're at about, I don't know, 13, 14,000 jobs where there were zero. So I think the spirit of what you're trying to accomplish is right there, but some questions for you. How, how would this, this body be initially funded?
Initially, and I would say that, one, going back to thanking our state partners, we have seed money, the best way to explain it. 1.25 million dollars, 750,000 for operating, as well as 500,000 for capital, just as beginning stages. I know that you and I have talked in our conversations leading up to today that the intent is not to have an organization that consistently requires a, a county appropriation, but one that can request and also work with our partners, because it's providing a, a need and also a benefit to the public, much like the Revenue Authority does, where they can request assistance and partner with the, with local government to accomplish the goals.
Okay, so you're, you're not looking to create a, a community development corporation, which really relies on state and local grant funding, the, the few that we do have in Baltimore County? So this is a different type of entity. So what, what's the goal for this, for this entity financially?
Financially, and I think that-
To sustain itself.
Sure. So I think, one, allowing it the ability, as our, as we've seen in Prince George's County, the ability for their authority to acquire land, to sell land, to go into contracts, as well as provide resource or services to the county, they can be revenue generating, and I think that's the intent. By having seed funds, that we can have folks with experience that's been either appointed by, that is appointed by the board, can be cost generating and also revenue generating for themselves. And I think this is a long-term, and also why we've strategically made this a, a very small impact area, to show that, one, we've seen it work in other places, we want to see it work here. But again, going back to this idea of what, doing it the Baltimore County way, and leading us to water rather than just throwing us into the, into the river, doing it our way, doing it so that it's effective, and also having the checks and balances associated with us as a council, as well as the county executive approving budgets. So if, in five years, three, five years, it's not, you know, it is, it is not providing the, the benefit that we want it to, and is taking away resources from, from the county, then we can reevaluate and make a decision on what to do strategically at that point.
Okay. And I have one more question for you, because it's, it's come up as people talk to me about the bill. Would this development authority have any ability to take land or take real property, or give the county the authority, talking about eminent domain? Do you want to address that?
Absolutely. No, it does not. That resides with the-
Already knew the answer.
I know, yeah. I appreciate, I figured you were leading me there. I just wanted to make sure, yeah.
Yeah.
The authority has no, no-
It's called, it's called, Councilman, it's called a softball.
There we go. Appreciate that, but no, absolutely, there's no, and we stayed in the bill specifically that the authority does not have eminent domain that still remains, resides with the county and the local government.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Yes, Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman Young, for your leadership and spearheading this, and also the cosponsors of the legislation. I appreciate the great thought that is being put into revitalizing this part of western Baltimore County. And as we have said, there is an opportunity perhaps for something like this in places like the White Marsh Town Center. I know that the two areas are different, and they have different needs. I will just repeat what I have said. The, the county needs to become more focused on the White Marsh Town Center. We have a task force of, of community representatives that has been meeting, doing their best, but we need a partner, and the White Marsh Town Center is important. So I'm hoping that we can get some attention here and make sure that both the east and west sides are thriving. But Councilman Young, thank you for your leadership, and I intend to support the legislation.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, we are very. Oh, Ms. Rogers? Sorry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Always a pleasure. I just had a few comments representing the administration. Councilman Young, we are so grateful for your work with the administration regarding the legislation. We too concur that the West Baltimore County Redevelopment Authority will be a catalyst for revitalizing West Baltimore County. As we revisit the Liberty Road CDO and the Security Square Mall, this authority could be another driving force in helping to revitalize and lift, lift the west side, and we absolutely support the effort. We appreciate the opportunity to partner with you and ensure that the legislation is successful. We also thank you for considering our feedback regarding the legislation. And as members of the administration discussed earlier, there's one section that we wanted to discuss. It was the provision that requires the CAO, the Director of OVF, and the county attorney to run the authority in the absence of staff in that early time period. That, that, that's the three of us. And as agreed, there was an amendment that would allow the county executive to designate staff at the request of the authority to support the redevelopment authority on an interim basis. This would allow the administration more flexibility to support the authority, especially in the beginning stages, and allow us not to have any conflict of interest. We hope, we appreciate your willingness to consider that part of the, well, amendment toward the legislation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I, one, just since we're, we are talking about this, I greatly appreciate your collaboration and the administration's collaboration on working on the language for this. In no means is, why, I know the administration and the county executive have been, we've all been together in terms of our efforts to support the west side and support the entire county, but in this effort that we have in front of us. There are going to be amendments, and look forward to, once we have the final language, sharing them publicly, even just through my office, just so folks are aware before we vote on this, what those amendments look like. That includes some of the changes that have been made, and also the conversations we've had with some of the legislators that were involved in this throughout the process before it got to us. So, thank you.
We thank you.
Okay, without further ado, I know we have some legislators that are here today, and we're very grateful and thankful that you came in to share your thoughts with us. And I will start with Senator Charles Sidnor. Senator Sidnor has been a very outspoken advocate for the area and has been working very hard to bring about change in the affected area. So, Senator Sidnor, it's good to see you today, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and county council. It's great to see two poly men up there. I won't go there, but-
Talking about that, I wouldn't hold it against you.
Good afternoon to all of you. First, I want to thank Councilman Young and Batoka for co-sponsoring Council Bill 4023. As the councilman mentioned earlier, this piece of legislation is very important and born from the frustration of many community members who envision their community as a place to live, work, and play. So by background, during the 2022 session, the Maryland General Assembly authorized Baltimore County to establish this West Baltimore County Redevelopment Authority, and Council Bill 4023 is the next step to ensure that this vision is fulfilled. If Baltimore County residents are to continue to enjoy a high quality of life, the county must be successful in its efforts to redevelop mature, older communities in their local business districts. And historically, to spur these, this type of investment into these communities, the federal, state, and local governments, they've created various programs and designations for which those communities would qualify and be designated. In this area, over the years, we've had, and currently have hub zones, opportunity zones, enterprise zones. We have designated sustainable community, as well as commercial revitalization zone. But despite these designations over the years, the county has not had the opportunity to focus its resources in a manner to spur the investment of the West Baltimore County, and has largely left these communities without the type of and quality of investment that it deserves. That's what this redevelopment authority is about. Significant revitalization and successful redevelopment projects are generally driven by private and public sectors working together with a unified vision for future economic and community development. And despite employers within West Baltimore County, such as the Federal Bureau of Investigations, their field office, Social Security Administration's headquarters, as well as the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare and Medicaid Services headquarters, and many mid-sized and small businesses, we have yet to fully capitalize upon these community assets. Instead, this area has been under, through, under stress through age, deterioration, blight, and flight. Even today, our communities are experiencing these stresses. By way, and just by way of example, a couple of years ago, Social Security made an announcement that as of November 1st, 2023, they'll be leaving the 1,500 block of Woodlawn Drive, relocating 2,000 workers to a space nearby. Just announced this a few weeks ago, after 74 years in business, Shoe City, which is headquartered at the eight, on 1,800 block of Woodlawn Drive, they filed for bankruptcy on April 3rd, and they closed their stores and will be closing its headquarters. And just recently, the University of Maryland Medical System announced that it's planning to close the University of Maryland Rehabilitation and Orthopedic Institute. And I only mention this because a portion of that campus is within Baltimore County, and this closure will affect our community. So why is this redevelopment authority important? Many have focused conversations around Security Square Mall, but the concept for this redevelopment authority goes way beyond that one property. Our residents, they've envisioned a better Woodlawn Village, and the communities along the Liberty Road, Baltimore National Pike, and Security Boulevard corridors. To have an entity like a redevelopment authority solely focused on the West Baltimore County catchment area will be a game changer for this community. A Council Bill 4023 permits us to focus on these communities in a manner that we haven't, benefiting West Baltimore County specifically, and all of Baltimore County generally, similar to what Trade Point Atlantic is doing for Baltimore County. It, it's in southeast, but it helps all of Baltimore County, and I've been a strong supporter since. In conclusion, the establishment of West Baltimore County Redevelopment Authority as outlined in Council Bill 4023 will provide the necessary structure to move forward. The authority will then have a set of tools, including certain rights to first refusal and authorizations to help spur a strong partnership between the public and private entities, federal, state, and local governing agencies, and, and community at large, in order to engage and act on the authority's sole mission, which is to bring revitalization and development to a designated area in Baltimore County. And for these reasons, I ask for your favorable vote in support of Council Bill 4023, and I thank you all.
Thank you very much, Senator Sidnor. Appreciate it very much. Any questions or comments for the senator?
I have one question. Senator Sidnor, good to see you.
You, too.
Are you, are you saying Kernan is leaving?
Yes, they're closing it.
Oh.
So they're going to be moved, and, and I have a meeting coming over the University of Maryland soon. They announced that they're going to be moving the employees from their campus downtown. So, again, another large campus, again, most of it's in Baltimore City, but the community in Franklintown is going to be adversely affected by that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Batoka?
Thank you, Senator Sidnor. Thank you for being a leader on this effort. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Some of the things you, you mentioned, I didn't really know about it. I didn't know Shoe City was leaving. Didn't know about Kernan, and it's- Didn't know about Kernan, and it's, it's all, you know, dreadful information, but I think it stresses the importance of us doing what we can to strengthen the area that we all represent. And so I appreciate you bringing that up. I appreciate your leadership and again, hope my colleagues can hear the message that it's vitally important that we engage in this. So thanks.
And, and in the testimony, I have to admit it to all of you, for those three incidents that are occurring, there are links to newspaper articles so that you can read for yourself. It's, and again, I wanted to make sure that you were aware because there's many things happening all around the county that we're not aware of, and, and, and again, this is the importance of an authority that's focused on that area, and they're gonna know everything that's going on in the area and try to help stymie some of that, that loss that is happening, so. Thank you.
Councilman Young?
One, thank you, Senator Sidnor, for making the trip up here. I know I mentioned it in my initial comments, but again, you were the sponsor of the legislation that came out of the House, excuse me, came out of the Senate that we then found in the House.
No, no, and, and I appreciate the fact of you taking the time to put forth the legislation and, and help make this a reality.
Absolutely, and
And, and, and if I may, to Councilman Crandall, while the state has put forth the million dollars, I'm, I'm not finished yet. I'm having, I'll be having conversations with DHCD to see how we can get some help. Redevelopment authorities across the nation, they reach out to CDFIs, they, they, they get money lent to them at, at low interest rates, so. I'm, my background, I'm an attorney for enterprise community investment. So I'm certainly no expert in redevelopment authorities, but I dabble a little bit. So I know when we, when we set this up and we get really good staff in place, though, that, that man or that woman, they're gonna know how to get the money and, and get this thing going. Now, I don't want anyone to think that there are any pipe dreams, because redevelopment authorities, the work that they do, it does not happen overnight. Some of it, it, it may take a good five or six years before something comes up. So I just ask for patience, and, and I ask that we, those of you who will be serving in the capacity, in ex officio capacity, we all work together, find some really good people that can, that have some expertise to move this forward.
And also last, I know that
Thank you, Senator.
Councilman Patoka had signed on quickly as a co-sponsor, but I know Chairman Jones, you had also requested to be put on as a co-sponsor as well. We just don't have you on there yet. Is there anyone else on the? Just wanted to clarify and make sure I recognize you as a co-
No, I appreciate it. I, I, yeah, I certainly am supportive and a co-sponsor as well. So I thank you for pointing that out.
And I thank you.
Any additional questions, comments for the Senator? Well, Senator Sidnor, we are honored to have you here today and really appreciate you taking the time to come out and share your comments, as well as all your work on this issue in the next.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And next, I will call another elected representative from the area, Delegate Alethea McCaskill. We certainly appreciate you being here as well. I see you joined by Delia Ruth. We'll get to her in a minute. And we also have Delegate Eric Elbasal on the line, so.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll skip around, not so for the interest of time. I am Delegate Alethea McCaskill for District forty-four B, but I'm also coming as a citizen who has lived in that district for twenty-nine years with my dogs, my husband, and my two daughters. My two daughters, who have told me because there's not much in the area, they do not plan to stay in the area. And it has been quite disheartening to hear that from my children, that I'll probably have to go to Australia to see my grandchildren. But nonetheless, I have also had a daycare in the district for twenty-five years this past May. And I am in full support of the Council Bill forty twenty-three for several reasons, but before I get to that, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Young and Patoka for co-sponsoring this bill. We literally have been waiting for this for a very long time. So it is a breath of fresh air just to have the conversation. So I'm sure each of our councilmen have had time to read this bill tirelessly through the entire bill. As you well know, the plan is not simplistic for either those of us who will significantly benefit from the redevelopment authority, or those who will carry the mission through, for the task will be substantial. And as you go along, we know that the quality of life will change for many generations to come. The Habitat for Humanity defines neighborhood revitalization as the collaborative effort to approach and improve the quality of life for all residents and the neighborhood. The redevelopment authority with accomplishment will accomplish this just cause by revitalizing and preserving our targeted communities. This mission for the authority will emphasize the platforms that our local elected officials prioritize and what our neighbors deserve and demand. A community and transit development along with affordable housing and allowing us to create a vibrant environment. So to Councilmembers Young, Patoka, Katz, Jones Jr., Marx, Erdel, Erdel, I apologize, and Crandall, we are asking for your commitment to resuscitate our community's ecosystem, for all of us to celebrate and benefit from, even if you're not a resident. There must be improvements made for a more robust community by rebuilding a brighter future for current businesses and families in search of resurrection, and new families and businesses looking for a fresh, promising start. And if I sound like a believer of promise, or if I even sound like a dreamer, I am. You see, we've been the dream deferred, and proud neighborhoods have gone on to dry up like raisins, or even to rot like spoiled meat. This authority will help sustain livable wages so we can afford basic needs and beyond. This authority will allow affordable housing to help ease homelessness. Yes, even in our areas, it exists. And it will allow families to stabilize. We will finally be able to collectively focus on areas such as communities' beautification and the health and the safety of our areas. Please support our efforts in making our areas just as attractive as those over on the east side of Baltimore County, and even traveling over to Howard County and Prince George's County and Montgomery County. We would like to be as sustainable as those places because we too want to live, work, and play, and where all our needs are met right in our backyard. And finally, I can't imagine either of you on this board, on the, on this council, to be in opposition of this redevelopment authority. For the few of you who may still have some skepticism, let me remind you that your duty of the implementation of this redevelopment authority will have a lasting impact on our communities with vitality and fresh energy. Please do not leave us like an open sore left to fester. Help us increase and allow us to accomplish the same dream as many of our surrounding neighborhoods are living. I thank you in advance for what you're gonna do and look, and helping us move forward in this authority. Thank you.
Well, Delegate McCaskill, I certainly appreciate your poetic testimony.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilman Katz?
Yeah, Delegate, thank you very much for being here today. Something you said did disturb me when you said, you have two daughters?
I do.
And they said that there's no reason for them to stay here. There's nothing here. What do they mean?
So, yeah. So my husband and I were talking about when we get older and what we were gonna do with our real estate, what I wanted to do with my daycare, because it has been twenty-five years, et cetera. And we were talking about the future, and my children said, well, mommy and daddy, you might as well go ahead and sell the house and take the proceeds. I was like, well, why, why do I want to do that? And they were like, well, my oldest daughter, who was Bria, she is a NICU RN. She graduated from Towson State University. And my youngest daughter is twenty-five, Kayla, she graduated from University of Maryland Terps, and she studied animal science. And each of them have told me that there is nothing there to come home for. There are no restaurants to sit in. There are no play areas for children to go. There is nowhere for dogs to muddle around. Sorry, Sheila, Katz too, I apologize. And there's no entertainment. There's no real entertainment for them to come to. And so the things that they would want to move into our neighborhood for, including simply a food store, it's not there. And so the great coffee shop that my youngest daughter would like to go to early in the morning, and the track that my daughters would like to ride their bikes on and take the dogs to, is, is non-existent at this point. And so this is my great concern, not just for my children, but in also talking to their peers. They don't see our area as a place to call home in any near future. And I'm very concerned for a lot of reasons, and for the blight that exists, and for the blight that will exist if we don't take care of this now.
And what is your community?
So I live right off of Liberty Road in the Lockern Community. I am a city girl by nature, but I decided to marry my husband, so he dragged me up there. And so I decided, because the grass was greener than where I came from, that I would call that place home. But things have changed tremendously, and it's causing me to also have second guesses.
When I think of that area, I think the housing market is pretty good, actually. Think of Westview and Woodbridge Valley. I think, think of Lockern, Villanova, et cetera. I think, you know, as far as communities go, so there's a lack of recreation.
Yes, a high lack of, lack of, lack of recreation. There are no, not many, not no, there aren't any, but there is very few retail places to shop. If you want to shop locally, if you just want to pick up a candle real quick for a birthday party, or if you just want to have, you know, do a quick dinner with your family in the evening. We're pretty, yeah, pretty lax.
Because so many people are shopping online. That's had a major effect on retail
Yeah.
industry. And I'm very interested in what this group will decide to, to do. You know, where do you begin? I mean, I look at Woodlawn, the business district.
Exactly. Well, we begin with starting, with creating the authority.
Yeah, right.
That's a good start.
And, you know, my bakery's gone in Woodlawn.
Yep.
My bakery's gone on Liberty Road, just south of the Beltway, so all those neighborhood businesses are gone.
You're absolutely right, and we literally refer ourselves to the great truck stop area on the Liberty Road corridor, because there are so many gas stations, if you will, and other transient stores, if you will. And so we want places to go, even with keeping in mind of the online shopping. We still want to, you know, support the mom-and-pop stores, right? And we still want to go somewhere quick to go and grab a bite to eat, or something quick to read a quick book, or something like that. And so we are looking for the development to bring and keep, because even though our housing market, as you mentioned, is great, most of our families are families that have, they're like generational families, if you will. But now we're thinking, my generation of children, they don't want to stay there, and including their peers who grew up in the same neighborhoods are considering to raise their families outside of the area. So we want to figure out how we can keep them home.
Now, with grocery stores, I mean, you have the Giant, you've got the grocery, is the grocery store at Security Square Mall still there?
So here, so I'm gonna, we're gonna do a walkthrough. How about you and I just do a walkthrough one day? So the store, the grocery store over at Milford Mill that used to be Giant is no longer there anymore.
I know.
And then, and so if I didn't have a car, for instance, the closest grocery store for me would have to be over at Security at the Wise Market, or in that, in that corridor, I would have to travel there, or in the Pikesville area. And I know, I love Randalls Town, but I would have to go a little further up as well to shop. And so we're looking for places, you know, food markets or, and fresh produce markets, because on the Rice's Town corridor, you literally have, you have at least ten fresh produce markets. And, and, and when I think about grocery stores, I'm not, we, I'm probably preaching to the choir, but when we talk about grocery stores, we mean more than just being able to get groceries. We're talking about sustaining health.
Sure.
Yeah.
And by the way, I represented most of this area in the legislature many years ago.
And we appreciate your service, we do. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you kind, sir.
Okay, I'll guess add something. We do have Grocery Outlet coming to the Milford Mill Giant, and here's a grocery store at Security Mall. Grocery Outlet, they have five hundred stores across the country. They're coming into Baltimore County. Bring in like eight or nine stores into Baltimore County. So, Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Delegate McCaskill, first, I want to thank you for your leadership on this.
Absolutely.
For your leadership, I, all that in the community, and I see you everywhere, so I know that you're, you're working from a strong base of knowledge that is at ground level and living in the, in the area, you know firsthand, and your daughters have expressed to you their concerns. You've shared concerns. I shared with my colleagues earlier today a piece I saw, I think it was on NBC National News about some redevelopment that's taking place at, at malls around the country. One is even in Annapolis Mall, they featured it in the West Coast Mall, and some of the ways that, that the malls have been restructured. And some of the mall operators said, really, our goal is we need to find a way to get people to get out of their house and come here. And so unfortunately, the things you expressed are true, because I live in the area as well. There's not a great reason for us to come out of the house and go there, and I will share a little story with you, which I may have shared in the past, and forgive me if I have. But shortly after the election, Senator Sidnor and I wanted to have a cup of coffee together. So we decided a good thing to do is let's have coffee in a place that is in District forty-four as well as District two. And we could only find one place to sit down and have coffee, and that was at Dunkin' Donuts on Liberty Road, next to Woodmore Shopping Center. But there was not a single other place to, really, I mean, we could have had breakfast, but it would have been, and no offense against Dunkin' Donuts, I think they do fine, but there's no kind of small restaurant to have coffee and in our districts. And it, it's less of a reason to leave the house. And I will say, most of the traffic that I saw in the Dunkin' Donuts were people going to work, picking up a quick cup of coffee or breakfast, but there, it wasn't, they were already in their destination path. And so we need, and I think the work of this redevelopment authority will increase our ability to have reasons to come out of the house and to go to a really cool place in the second district, or the forty-fourth district, or the first district, or the fourth district. And so those are the things that we need to do, and appreciate your effort in this and the effort of everybody that has participated in this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Delegate McCaskill. I now would like to call up Delegate Sheila Ruth. Thank you so much for being here, Delegate Ruth. We know you notified me earlier you'd be coming here straight from Annapolis, so we appreciate you taking the time to come out.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your consideration. It was quite a harrowing drive in the rain. So thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and, and to see you all, Mr. Chair, members of the council. It's been a while since I, I've been here, and so it's great to see you. I'm here in support of Bill forty dash twenty-three, the West Baltimore County Redevelopment Authority. I also live in the Cashman area for this authority. I've lived here for thirty-five years, and I have seen the changes over the year. I also live in the Ketchment area for this authority. I've lived here for 35 years, and I have seen the changes over the year, years. West Baltimore County has great communities and great people, but it's experiencing the consequences of years of disinvestment. Decline of commercial corridors, including loss of grocery stores that has been discussed, vacant retail establishments, retail stores that may have lower quality merchandise, increase of facilities that provide little community benefits, such as dollar stores, self-storage facilities, and gas stations. And we're seeing an increasing number of those as well. The consequences of the pandemic has, have further exacerbated this decline, including, as Councilman Catch mentioned, an expansion of online shopping, more and, more people. I mean, that already existed before the pandemic, but the pandemic, you know, exacerbated that. Also, the change in office work as well. And the Social Security campus is, is in this area. Social Security has an unknown future right now. Most of employees on that campus have been working remotely since 2020. Don't know if or when they will come back. We don't know the future of the campus. If Social Security is going to keep that campus, or dive, you know, surplus part of it, we just don't know at this point. And so there's a lot of changes in the area. The, the fact that Social Security employees have been teleworking impacts local restaurants and retail establishments, because they're not there to shop and eat. So there's a lot that's unknown about the future, adding to the long-term disinvestment. I really appreciate the work that the current administration has put into this, to reversing this decline, including the huge effort at Security Square, the, to reimagine Security Square, and the funding put forward by both the county and the state to advance that project. However, there are other areas that, that need investment, need attention and funding, including Woodlawn Village, Baltimore National Pike, and the Liberty Road Corridor. And so the administration has responsibility for the full county. And they have to divide attention and resources, obviously, around the county. And so that's where something like this authority is an advantage. It would be an organization of people, community leaders, community members, and elected officials who live in that area, who know the area, who know the needs, who know the communities, and who can focus specifically on that area, partnering with the county and with the state, to ensure that the region and the communities get what they need. And so to Councilman Catch's point also about retail and online shopping, the retail establishments that are going to succeed with the online shopping being such a big factor now, are those that offer retail as an experience. You can't just open a store and expect people to come. So when you have retails and experiences, maybe as part of a town center, where like is envisioned at Security Square, where people can walk around, enjoy the outdoors, stop in unique stores. Those are the kinds of retail facilities that are, that are going to succeed. And so this authority can really focus on, you know, the plans for the area, work with partners, work with business, work with the state and the county, to really bring what's needed. So I want to thank Councilman Young for your leadership in this. Councilman Patoka and Chairman Jones for sponsoring the bill as well, and the entire county council for your consideration. I want to thank Senator Sidnor and Senator Brooks, who was a delegate at the time, for introducing this, this bill in 2022. And I ask for your support for Bill 40-23, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Delegate Ruth. Any questions, comments from the members? Mr. Chair? Go ahead, Councilman Patoka.
Thank you, Delegate Ruth, for your leadership on this. And I was really pleased that you brought up Woodlawn Village, because it's kind of in no man's land, so to speak, because it's not one of the arterials, but it's really critical to the revitalization of the Woodlawn area. I'm hoping that the, and I appreciate the county executive investing in the Senior Center in Woodlawn Village, and I'm hoping that's a catalyst to re-energize the Woodlawn Village area. And, but it's only the beginning. And I think that it continues through this initiative of having an economic development authority. And Woodlawn Village is a perfect example of disinvestment. We had Councilman Catch, I don't know if you remember Louise's Bakery, but that's a vacant shop in Woodlawn Village that could be something spectacular, and I hope will become something spectacular. We have Joe Mann's Trophy Shop, and there's other buildings. There's a hardware store, there's other boutiquey type stores there. And we need to make that village a destination place. In fact, I will say that at one time, believe it or not, I think it's China Wok was my go-to place for China, Chinese food. But unfortunately, I saw a sign that, and I know this will bring a frown on many of my colleagues' face, China Wok is going to close. And so there's a great opportunity there. And I'm, like I said, and I won't belabor this point, that I, I believe that the investment in the Senior Center will be the catalyst. So thank you, Sheila Ruth, Delegate Sheila Ruth, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Pat Young.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Patoka. And I, in doing some research on, actually on Woodlawn Village, I, I had found an article from a couple of decades ago where it was, Woodlawn Village was described. I don't remember the exact words, but it was described as like a charming Main Street corridor. And it's not now, but it could be again, and I would like to see it that.
Delegate Ruth, my, my mom used to work at the Cash and Carry that was on Windsor Mill Road, right next to Woodlawn Village. I think it's an office building, or no, it's a church now.
Thank you.
Delegate Ruth, don't forget the Calico Cat, which they imported things from York, and it was quite a nice store that would draw people from all over the county.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I, because of this particular councilman to my left representing Woodlawn, the article you read about Woodlawn applied when now, now look at it.
It's on the comeback, Councilman. Yeah, I, I will, I will say that it is important to note that, you know, the county executive certainly been responsive and supportive of the community. And in the very community that we're talking about, we're putting a sizable investment in expanding, making a renovation on the Senior Center. So, you know, we have been making some investments there, and I noticed a lot of money going into repairing and upgrading the police station right there in the corner. So, want to note, any additional questions or comments? Thank you very much, Delegate Ruth.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. And let's see here. Next, we have Delegate Eric Ebersol, who's online. Delegate Ebersol, Spel Castro?
There we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for letting me visit you this way. I hate to say it, but you saved me a harrowing trip on the Beltway. Pleased to be here with you all today. My comments are going to be more global, because the process of watching the state delegation pass this was nothing less than heartening. Certainly, this bill focuses on a specific part of the county, but we all know that we represent the entire county. In fact, even though my District 44 mates are here, we have a district that is subdivided. No part of this particular bill will affect part of the district that I represent. That part is not incredibly relevant to me, because I think we are one Baltimore County. And I have heard and listened to us all talk about parts of the county that we feel like need attention. White Marsh, the stuff that we have done for Trade Point. Right now, in, in the, in my colleagues' part of District 44, we're struggling with what we used to call Seagram's and Guinness and Diageo. I can name several shopping centers in the Lansdowne or Butis area that need the same sort of attention. But we have to start somewhere. And I watched the state delegation pass this bill in a bipartisan fashion last year, even though we are from all over the county, recognizing that this was a great sort of pilot and way to start a program like this. And as so often happens, we pass enabling legislation, and then we turn to the seven of you and ask you to be equally bipartisan in recognizing the actual implementation of it. And so, given that the delegation was fully in support, and I come to you as the chair of the delegation, I will tell you that one of your colleagues there was the chair at the time, helped shepherd it through. But we also had, of course, you've seen Senator Sidnor, now Senator Ben Brooks, who was the delegate at the time, who had the cross file. Lots of people very interested in this bill from slightly different parts of the county. But even though our county has a broad geographic reach as it circles around the city, I think we all see the needs everywhere, and I think the West Side is ripe for this. And I think once we see the success that it creates, we'll probably be motivated to continue it in other parts of the county. And to that, I would give you credit. I've heard a lot of supporting statements today. I saw, I heard them when we passed this enabling legislation. And with that, I will simply say, let's get them. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Delegate Ebersol. It is always a pleasure to see you and hear from you, and appreciate you taking the time to join us today. Any questions or comments from the members? We, we thank you so very, very much, sir. Have a good day.
Thank you very much as well.
Thanks for joining us. Appreciate you recognizing that we are one Baltimore County. So, thank you. And next, I would like to bring on another delegate that cares about the area as well. Delegate N. Scott Phillips sent in some comments to us, but he's also going to join us.
Yes, I don't know if you all can see me. Let me see.
Have to turn your camera on for that one.
There we go. We'll start the camera. Sorry about that. A little dark. I'm actually coming to you from steamy New Orleans today, attending a conference. But I wanted to just say a couple of things, and I'm going to get off the script. You have written testimony for me. I want to thank Senator Sidnor for bringing this legislation, as well as a former delegate and now Senator Ben Brooks. I also want to come from a different perspective. And once again, I'm going to get away from my written comments. I spent seven years as the chair of the planning board in Baltimore County. And during that time, both under our former county executive Kevin Caminitz, and under our current county executive Johnny Oshewski, one of the conversations that I would have with them is, what are the tools that we're using in Baltimore County for economic development, for revitalization of our communities? And quite frankly, we don't have a lot of tools, unlike some of our sister municipalities. In Baltimore City, you have the Baltimore Development Corp., you have the Downtown Partnership, you have all of these things that are focused on community development. In Prince George's County, you've got a whole development organization that does both economic development and real estate development. Montgomery County the same way. We've got to begin to leverage things like this West Baltimore County Redevelopment Authority. Using these tools, we bring in additional resources. We can leverage the Department of Housing and Community Development and use the authority to bring down money from what programs like Burning, or CORE, or other economic development funding. We can bring down, as the senator said, we can bring down other tax incentives. But without an authority, we don't have the tools, we don't have the organization to attract this additional, these additional resources to develop a Woodlawn Village, to develop a Long Security Boulevard, to develop a neighborhood that I actually grew up in along Woodmore. You mentioned that Dunkin' Donuts. It is pretty much a shame that it is the only coffee house, if you will, in our community along that area. I've been a big proponent of the Liberty Road, the Liberty Road Development Authority as well, organization. So I am stressing to the members of the council, please work along with us to provide the tools necessary to do economic development, not only in Woodlawn and Randalls Town, but as Delegate Ebersol and the chair of the Baltimore County delegation has said, around the county. Let's be forward-thinking. So as we look at this, and I'm encouraging you all to support this, I just thank you. I didn't want to miss the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to come in, just to say a few words to the sponsors, Councilman Patoka and Councilman Young. And just know, you can see, you've got all of the delegates that are in this area supporting this. As you go through this process, we will be here to work along with you. So I thank you very much and encourage you to support 4023.
All right. Thank you very much, Delegate. We appreciate you taking the time to join us from New Orleans, and it's always a pleasure seeing you. So thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, I believe we've taken care of that. Next, we will move on to page 15. Bill 43-23. Nope, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, I don't want to do that. Let's go to 13, 4123. Page 13, Bill 4123, Volunteer Fire Length of Service Award Program. Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So Bill 4123 amends the minimum benefit payment of a member of a volunteer, of the Volunteer Fire Length of Service Awards Program, also known as LOSAP, the amount that they may receive. Generally, LOSAP is a program to financially assist volunteer members of a county volunteer fire, ambulance, rehabilitation, or rescue company upon their successful completion of at least 25 years of credible service in good standing. Currently, a member eligible to receive LOSAP benefit payments shall receive a payment of at least $100 per month for life. Bill 4123 increases this minimum amount to $300 per month for life. The administration has advised that the fire department's budget for FY '23 and '24 do include this at a $300 per month level for life. But what we want to do here is we want to modify and codify the minimum level of benefit from $100 to $300. So in the future, if we reach a budget year that we have to struggle through, that there's no negative impact on our volunteer, the members of our volunteer fire companies. So that is a summary of the bill. I urge my colleagues to support this.
Okay, Councilman Marks?
Just briefly, thank you, Councilman Patoka, for your excellent summary, and I'm very proud to be a co-sponsor.
And thank you, Councilman Marks, for co-sponsoring. I should have mentioned that earlier.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to co-sponsor as well. You gonna let me?
Absolutely. I'll co-sponsor with you. Okay, there you go. Next, any questions, comments from the members? Why don't we?
No, there's too many of you in agreement. So it makes me nervous. So I will not co-sponsor. Although I will vote for it.
Oh, thank you so much. We have a couple of speakers. Susan Bollinger?
Good evening, Chairman Jones and fellow council members. My name is Susan Bollinger, and I'm the president of the Baltimore County Volunteer Firefighters Association. I'm also a 40-year riding member of the Volunteer Fire Service. And on behalf of our 2,100 members on our books, and the 458 of us that are currently receiving LOSAP, I can't thank you enough for your support of the LOSAP program. The LOSAP program was set up in 1982 to reward active members who gave 25 years of qualified service, reaching 50 points per year. They were able to receive a stipend at the age of 60 for that service. It was set up as a thank you to our volunteers for their service, and it's also a valuable tool to use as recruitment and retention of our members. As you can see, currently, almost 25% of our members are receiving LOSAP benefits. When it was started in 1982, Baltimore County was one of the pioneers in the program, and many of the jurisdictions around the state followed our lead. Now there are 21 counties that have active LOSAP programs, and many of them now have higher benefits, lower age requirements, and less years of service that people have to reach to get those benefits. So, it's harder for us to recruit new members. Over the years, we've adjusted how points were received in order to reflect the needs of our companies, the fire services, and the citizens. We now give more points for fire calls because that's our core goal and our need to serve the community, and less points for things such as fundraising, meetings, et cetera. We have had occasional increases in the stipend to keep up with inflation and the cost of living. However, that minimum benefit has never been increased in the code. This law will finally help us get that increase memorialized so that our people don't have to worry about that ever being cut. They will at least get the amount that they're getting today. I personally joined the service in 1983, a year after LOSAP was started. And to be honest, it was not the recruitment tool that brought me to the fire department. But I can say that 12 years later, when my twins were born, it was a big incentive for me to keep active so that I could get the remaining 13 years that I needed to qualify for LOSAP. And I know that, in many cases, LOSAP has been a recruitment tool and an even bigger retention tool. Many of our members join the service or graduate from our junior programs in their teens or early twenties. Then life events happen, and many leave and start careers, families, or go on for other reasons. Many of them come back based on LOSAP because they want to finish their time to collect. As the President of an association where recruiting volunteers is difficult, I can't thank you enough for your continued support and ask you to help in these recruitment efforts. And while we are very appreciative of this bill and the solidifying of the current amount, we need everyone to understand that we have enhancements that we would like to see proposed before the next budget that would help us recruit and retain our members. The members of our LOSAP board, my fellow officers and I, are available to talk to you about these benefits at any time. Some examples are enhancements in, of these enhancements are a real estate tax credit that could be for volunteers. It would not require a 25-year commitment, but would keep volunteers active in Baltimore County, live in Baltimore County, and spend their money in Baltimore County to help the Baltimore County economy. I urge you to pass this bill and to talk to one of our representatives so that we can be a stronger fire service together to support the citizens of Baltimore County. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Bollinger. Thank you for your service as a member of the Volunteer Fire Company, but also as President of Volunteer Firefighters Association. I appreciate you bringing to my attention the other things that we can do to assist recruitment and assist retaining volunteers to your respective organizations. And I'm supportive of them. They do have budget impact. And so, one of the things that we're not able to do as a council is to increase the budget at all. We have the ability, we have limited ability. We can cut. We can't redirect dollars. However, I think the things you bring forward have merit and deserve consideration. And I know we've spoken about other possibilities for the volunteer members. And so, what I would, I think it's a great suggestion that you're interested in meeting with my colleagues, as you did with me. And I would encourage that. I would also, and I've shared this with you and other members before, that around January, February, and March, the County Executive will have Budget Town Hall meetings. And, you know, I think the, you know, I don't want to speak for the executive, but I certainly, the years I've known him, certainly believe that he would be receptive to this. But, and I think if it's brought forward to him in the Town Hall meetings as we move into, you know, and time moves quickly. So, January, February, and March of 2024 seems far away, but maybe as I get older, it moves quickly. But it's right around the corner. And I would encourage you and your members to be at the Budget Town Hall meetings to share how we can provide the appropriate compensation that does help to recruit and retain volunteer members. So, and again, thank you for your testimony, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you for sponsoring the-
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Katz?
Yeah, thank you very much. It's good to see you again. And I miss not having Linda in my district anymore, but wanted to make a comment about the property tax credit issue. I think it's important that we extend that program to police as well. It's so beneficial that police firefighters who actually live in the county. It's been found to be so, as far as police go, it's been found to reduce crime. Of course, as far as response time goes, to extend that to the fire service as well is a real advantage. And if you do, in recruiting people, this would be a tremendous, tremendous benefit. So, I support what you're saying, and it's good to see you again.
Okay, President Bollinger, I thank you so much for coming in and testifying. We appreciate your advocacy on behalf of the Volunteer Firefighters of Baltimore County. We know, and no one knows more than I, having worked alongside volunteer firefighters for 32 years and can appreciate the service they provide to the citizens. So, we thank you for your advocacy, and we look forward to supporting them in years to come. So, thank you so much. Next, we'll call up Mr. Louis Roddy?
He's online, Mr. Chair.
Rudy?
I am here.
Okay.
You want me?
Yes, we can hear you. We can see you from the nose up.
I'm sorry, okay. I'm not feeling-
You just above, boy, there you go.
I was planning on being there in person, but I have a really bad chest cold, as you could probably hear. I'll keep it brief because Susan said a lot of what I was going to say anyway. But I really want to thank Councilman Patoka and Marks for presenting and sponsoring this bill, which will solidify what has been our recipient amount for the last several years. And we just hope going forward, we can, and look at other things like Susan said as well. We had met with Mr. Patoka and Mr. Marks and discussed enhancements to the policy to improve, to include the property tax break that we just discussed a few minutes ago. And I just wanted to mention, and I've been forwarding documentation to the gentleman, that this has become a relatively popular trend nationally. Some state of New York has done it, as well as a lot of other jurisdictions where they've given property tax breaks to their volunteers that live in the county that they volunteer. One of the other things we were looking at was possibly tying in the LOSAP monthly payment to 1% of a probationary career firefighter salary to allow for cost of living enhancements as well. On neighboring Howard County does that, does this, and has had success. It's been very easy for them to manage. Some of the other things of Community College of Baltimore County tuition, we've looked at enhancements for that, in addition of additional funding for burial benefits. Again, I just want to thank, thank you all for your support and hope you support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We certainly appreciate your service and appreciate you joining us today to testify. Any additional questions, comments from the members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask that our Secretary add me as a sponsor? I have reconsidered.
Okay, fantastic. Fantastic. Welcome to the club. And now, we will move on to page 15, Bill 43-23. Councilman Marks and I.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll be very brief. Bill 4323 amends a rule in Chapter 13 of the Baltimore County Fire Prevention Code as adopted by Bill 1421 regarding fire protection systems. Specifically, the bill amends a section that governs speculative warehouse automotive sprinkler system designs. The bill adds an exemption for a historic building defined as a building on the National Register of Historic Places or a building for which the Maryland Historical Trust has a de-eeasement that is at least 500,000 square feet in size. However, where sprinkler protection is required by other sections of the Baltimore County Fire Protection Code and National Fire Protection Association 13 compliance system must be provided based on proposed tenant occupancy and hazard.
Thank you very much. I have joined Councilman Marks on this bill basically to, I guess, some of the things that sort of caught my attention is when we are the only jurisdiction in the state to do something, I think is worth noting. And no one cares more, I should not say no one, but I certainly care an awful lot about firefighter safety and survival and would not want to do anything that would harm or injure any firefighter. We're all weirder ones that have to go in when things go wrong to put the fire out or mitigate the emergency. So, I would not be co-sponsoring anything that I thought put firefighters at risk. But at the same time, you know, it's important that we are reasonable in our approach with regulations and make sure we don't do anything that would somehow hamper the economic vitality of Baltimore County. So, I see this issue as basically trying to fit a square peg in a round hole in the sense that when you look at the regulations, we're trying to make a building, to make a long story short, comply with a regulation that would be easy to apply for a new building being built, but very difficult to do for an older building, especially if it's considered a historical building, which brings on a whole different issue in and of itself. So, I do know we have some speakers here, so I'm not going to keep going too far. I'll follow up with some issues if I don't think they're covered by some of the speakers. So, on that note, are there any questions, comments before we get started? We have some speakers, and why don't we start with the administration? Do we have anybody from the administration that wants to talk about the bill? No? Okay. We have some speakers that are here. Let's see, starting with Patsy Malone. Here? Is she virtual?
She signed up as in-person, but she is online.
Okay, online it is.
I'll get her on.
I apologize for the change in plans. The thunderstorm scared me away. So, good evening, Council, and my name is Patricia Malone with Venable LLP. I'm speaking in support of Bill 4323 on behalf of my client, Reich Brothers. The bill stems from problems my client has been having in trying to retrofit an existing building in the aviation station development. Members may be more familiar with the old term, Middle River Depot. They're trying to retrofit that building from the prior use as an industrial plant to a warehouse. Reich Brothers has gone to great effort and expense in trying to bring the building into compliance with the current Baltimore County Fire Code. The company has signed a lease for 600,000 square feet, which is the entire upper floor of the building. And as Councilman Marks mentioned, the bill, the code contains a special regulation for speculative warehouses. Now, that term is not defined anywhere in the Fire Code. We have been told that any leased warehouse is considered by the fire department a speculative warehouse. And by its wording, this provision applies to all new warehouses and to all renovated warehouses. The speculative warehouse provision requires that a sprinkler system be installed to protect for Class A plastics at a maximum height for the building, regardless of whether that condition exists in the building or not. So, it requires that that additional protection be provided just in case that storage configuration ever occurs within the building. So, in addition to being very expensive, achieving this level of protection within an existing building is challenging, and it's even more difficult in an existing historic building. Reich Brothers Building was built in 1941 to accommodate aircraft assembly. It was built for the construction of the B-26 Marauder bombers. The building's most significant feature is its open floor area and its 46-foot clear ceiling height. Now, that was obviously to assemble the aircraft within the building. The building is subject to a recorded easement with the Maryland Historical Trust, which prohibits interior or exterior changes without the Maryland Historical Trust's approval. Easement specifically requires preservation of the historic volume of the space. The MHT has allowed some changes within the building already, including the installation of a drop ceiling within 250,000 square feet and a new sprinkler system that was installed within that drop ceiling. The client has been involved or advised by consultants that the MHT will likely not allow the remaining 350,000 square feet to be built out in this same fashion. This area has an existing functioning sprinkler sufficient to protect the tenant's actual materials and the configuration that they propose. So, we are requesting that the council support an exemption for historic buildings like this one, which is very limited to over 500,000 square feet. And as Councilman Marks mentioned, the bill would actually require that the space be sprinkler to protect what the tenant is actually storing, instead of always assuming the worst-case scenario. This approach is consistent with the state Fire Code and other jurisdictions, and you all have received or should have received a copy of a letter or code analysis from the fire protection engineer who will be speaking next. So, we will make ourselves available if anyone has any questions about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malone.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, you first.
Thank you, Ms. Malone.
I guess wanted to take, thank you so much, Ms. Malone, for testifying. But I guess wanted to just recognize for one minute the importance of this facility, the importance of Martin State Airport. And the B-26 flew over 110,000 sorties during World War II. The B-26 was built right there in Middle River and flew over England during the beginning of the war and as well as the Mediterranean. So, it was a very important function. It created a tremendous punch to our enemies. And it started right here and was built right here in Middle River. So, I think it's very, very important that we recognize that and not just look at it as a footnote, but, you know, Middle River did an awful lot.
Sure. Thank you.
Citizens right here in Baltimore County. Rosie the Riveter in many of those cases. Since the members all fighting, Rosie was here building those bombers.
Right, exactly.
Yes, go right-
Yeah, I'm glad the chairman brought that up. It's between 1911 and 1960, the Glenn O. Martin Company and others produced over 80 different types of aircraft and more than 11,000 planes, including the Enola Gay. So, an incredibly rich and robust aviation history right here in Baltimore County.
Yep. And that's why we're so supportive of the museum. That's right. Thank you very much, Ms. Malone. And we will move on to the next speaker. Chris, I'll hand it back over to you. I'll hand the controls over to you.
You are doing a spectacular job, Mr. Chair. I think you should continue. Our next speaker is Kristin Weiniger. Ms. Weiniger, you are on as a panelist.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much for having me. To give you a little bit of background, my name is Kristin Weiniger. I'm a fire protection engineer licensed in the state of Maryland. I've been working in fire protection engineering for a little over eight years now. And I've come forward on this project and this amendment, not only because I truly believe in it, but because I've been able to see how this whole process really worked through two different ownerships as we've tried to really renovate this historic building. So, as you'll see in the document that was provided to you, the Baltimore County Fire Code, this amendment is added information above and beyond what is required by the national standards, the National Fire Protection Codes, which is NFPA 13. In almost every other jurisdiction, and most importantly, with the state fire marshal's office, any other warehouse is just going to be evaluated based on what tenant is going- Office, any other warehouse is just going to be evaluated based on what tenant is going in that space, and you have to put a sprinkler system in based on what is actually going in that building. This amendment is just asking for that. It's asking for the building to be looked at, knowing that it's a historic building, knowing that it had, it's not being built from the ground up, and that it has some of these very important architectural features that makes retrofitting and overdesigning a sprinkler system for a possible future hazard very onerous and honestly not even possible within the NFPA thirteen standards based on those massive clear heights, the changes in the ceiling elevation that currently exist. If you have a chance, I'm sure you can walk through the site. You'll see that the ceilings jump up and down. They have massive clear stories. We've done fire modeling to prove that the sprinkler system will act the way that we expect with the anticipated hazard. Even with the proposed new amendments, by dropping back from the twenty-twenty-one amendment and going to the Class Four hazards rather than the Class A plastics, we still can't comply due to that unusual ceiling configuration that we talked about. To accommodate the maximum possible storage in that high clear space, to give you a concept, the highest portion of that top hat is fifty-two clear feet. The maximum amount of storage would technically be very close to that. It would be over forty feet, which is A, not going to be provided in that space, and B, is requiring that the sprink, would require that the sprinkler system be completely replaced. The existing water supply to the, to the space could not accommodate that sprinkler system demand. And not only would they have to replace the sprinkler system, the fire pump, and add a water tank, it would, it's for making the warehouse something that it would never actually be, be used for. If exempted, we're not trying to say that the building would have anything less than NFPA-required code coverage. The sprinkler system will activate as designed by code. This is a very standard approach, and the owner is very aware of the limitations for the building moving forward. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Number one, is it my understanding that no other jurisdiction have this requirement this way?
Correct. No other jurisdiction requires the Class A plastics to require Class Four commodities, but those are purely associated with new construction and with speculative buildings being, buildings that do not have tenants in them.
And if I could, you, the owners, came to Councilman Marks and I with an issue with concern. What, just reiterate, why are we here with legislation? Why is it necessary for legislation?
Sure. So for about a year, we've been trying to work through the Fire Marshal's Office and the Building Review Department to get an exception, an acceptance of equivalent level of safety to try to work through some of these issues and show that we are, we are providing a sprinkler system that meets the tenant's needs. The ownership is aware of what those limitations are so that, and we've also gone through and even offered additional steps to help with the actual surveying, annual survey of the property by the Fire Marshal's Office. Most of the feedback that we received is that there is not an avenue for them to provide an equivalency or acceptance of anything beyond what is in the code, and the code is very clear about what it is requiring for new and renovated speculative warehouses. So that is why we are putting this forward, so we can have a point where they can point to and say, yes, per the legal legality, you can omit this requirement because we are a historic building. We're being looked at just for its specific requirements. We're making sure that we're meeting minimum code standards, and we're going to protect building, people, and firemen based on the national accepted standards.
Okay. And one more, getting back to the historical nature of the building, do you, in your professional opinion, do you think you could even make these changes to the building and still comply with the requirements of a historical building?
Not without spending an insane amount of money to and an insane amount of time to completely change the infrastructure. Like I mentioned, you would have to add a water tank because the county water supply is not sufficient. It's, it's really onerous to do this to an existing building, and to do it to a historic building, it would, the only way to do it would be to damage the historic integrity of the building. As we talked about, the drop ceilings being provided and the two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, those block all of that historic structure on the inside, and so that is not possible to be moved to the remainder of the warehouse due to MHT.
Okay. I'm done. Any questions, comments from the members? Next, we'll move on. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Appreciate you being here. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly. Our next speaker is Michael Reich. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. For some reason, I'm unable to make him a panelist, but let me see if I can unmute Can't unmute him either. I'm not sure how he's on, Mr. Chair, but I cannot unmute him, and I cannot make him He may try, Mr. Reich, if you're there, maybe try logging on from a different device or logging off and logging back on. I have him on.
Okay.
Another, now he's on another device. You are on, Mr. Reich. We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, counsel. Sorry about the, the communication error, and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Michael Reich. I'm one of the principals of Reich Brothers and current owners of the former depot, now known as Aviation Station. Reich Brothers is a family business. We're a national industrial real estate group. We specialize for many years now in restoring former industrial sites and bringing them back to life, bringing jobs, employment, and occupancy, hopefully, back to these shuttered sites that have been sitting idle for many years. We take great pride in the work that we do and bringing these projects back to its former beauty, glory, and something that the community could be proud of. We purchased the former depot in two thousand twenty-one with the same intent. It was surely a heavy lift, but one that we felt suited for, just given our experience. While not expecting all to be a smooth sailing, given the work needed to bring the site to full occupancy, we thought it was a worthwhile endeavor. The same reason that the councilman mentioned, the historical nature of this property, the history of it, was something that we thought worth our time, worth, worth the money, worth the effort. It was an incredible project to get involved with. But in the process, we have run into a lot of difficulty meeting a more burdensome blanket Fire Code, which comparatively to the rest of the country and other places we work in and other municipalities in Maryland have stricter compliance thresholds. To be frank, if we were aware of the standard of this new code when we purchased this site, it might not have been something we proceeded with, just given the unanticipated costs that we weren't expecting, honestly. But more specifically, as it relates to this type of building, being historical in nature and subject to Maryland Historical Trust's compliance and approval, it in essence does not conform to a standard, modern-day spec building for all the reasons Kristin mentioned and Patsy mentioned. It was built in the nineteen forties and obviously has a very unique configuration with sloping roofs and all the different historical architectural components of it. The cost to upgrade the system to date, the prior system, have quite honestly put the property and the project in jeopardy, just given the millions of dollars of unanticipated costs and delays and complications to complete. To do so further based on the current code, just given the nature of the building, not even sure if it's feasible from a historical standpoint, but would run great risk to the project and would be a significant cost and financial burden. The building is now a fully tested NFPA-compliant building. It's suitable for occupancy, and if you have driven by it recently, it really has come a long way, and we're proud of the work that we've done thus far. Our company is committed, as we are in all of our projects, to proper oversight of this building, keeping a safe, compliant working environment, and we truly appreciate the council's support for this important project and look forward, look forward to continuing our work in Middle River. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reich, is it?
Mr. Reich, yep. You got it.
Reich?
Yeah, Reich, yes.
Listen, I hate to get personal, but I remember reading some things in the paper, so I'll guess I ask you anyway. What did y'all pay for this building?
We paid over fifty million dollars for this building.
And how much money have you spent on, as I understand it, you've already made significant improvements to the building as well as the fire protection system by adding a drop ceiling as well as some additional sprinklers? How much money have you spent thus far?
We've spent in excess of thirty million dollars thus far renovating this building, and a lot of that has been towards the sprinkler system and the drop ceiling, well in excess of what we've budgeted.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'm going to take this opportunity, I've never met you before or talked to you before, to thank you for making an investment here in Baltimore County. We certainly appreciate it and recognize you're a national company. There's a lot of places you could go, but you came here, and we are appreciative of that, and we thank you. And we're going to collect taxes on this fifty million and eighty million, and then those taxes are going to provide for the services to our citizens, schools, roads, police, and fire, and we guess, I guess, want to take the opportunity to thank you for making the investments here in Baltimore County.
Our pleasure. Thank you very much for those kind words. We, it is something that we honestly take great pride in, and we, we've worked in Middle River. My, you know, the family, the Reich family, has been working in Baltimore in general for many, many years, and we've only been met with great support, so we truly appreciate that and look forward to many more good things to come.
Great. Councilman Marks?
Just to wrap this up, I know the night is getting late. Mr. Reich, thank you for testifying. Mr. Chairman, you hit the nail right on the head. This is what we want to be doing, adaptive reuse. This is good planning. This is using historic properties in productive ways, and I want to thank the chairman for partnering with me on this bill.
Sure. Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Thank you so much again for calling in, and we will move on now. My friends, if you, let me just say this. We've, we are a couple of hours into our meeting. We have an agenda of twenty-two, twenty-three items, and we covered four. So this is where I'll put it in high gear, and we're going to do our very, very best to move with direction and a purpose to finish this up relatively quickly. So on that note, we will move on to page one, this Stacy Rogers, Bill thirty-seven twenty-three, Board of, Board Compensation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. The administration is requesting legislation to provide the compensation for members of the Planning Board, the Police Accountability Board, the Administrative Charging Committee, and the Trial Boards, and generally relating to compensation for such board and committee members. Mr. Chair, you will recall that during our presentation of the executive compensation plan, you expressed concern about other boards and commissions that the county had not heretofore compensated. And as discussed, we did go back and conduct a complete analysis on, and, and a benchmarking with sister jurisdictions and found that with exception to the Planning Board, the county was in alignment with other sister jurisdictions. The, the county, the analysis that we have provided in addition to the, the proposed compensation indicated that other jurisdictions most commonly compensated the Planning Board, the Police Accountability Board, and Administrative Charging Committee and Trial Boards. So we are putting forward this proposed legislation to come into alignment with the, the other jurisdictions, and we are requesting your, the council's approval for the proposed amounts reflected in the legislation. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you so much for you and the county executive. The administration has been true to your word. You went back, you did the work, you came back with a proposal. Most of these people, if not all these people, have volunteered to do the work for Baltimore County on a voluntary basis, yet we recognize that they do take time away from their family and they do spend time working for us, so it's only fair that we in fact compensate them when we can. So I appreciate it, and I look forward to supporting the bill. Any questions or comments from the members? Nope? Great. We're going to move on to, I'm going to switch gears real fast. Thank you, Ms. Rogers, and I'm going to get this out of our way. Mr. Marks, I'm going to go to you on Resolution eighteen dash twenty-three, Property Tax Exemption for Stephen. Now, I guess we'll do that on that, we'll do that Monday.
Yeah, that's one that is pro forma, Mr. Chairman, for Monday.
All right. I guess didn't want to forget. I see it sitting down there by itself.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to page four, Renee Coleman, Chief of Classification and Compensation, Office of Human Resources, Bill thirty-eight dash twenty-three.
Good evening, Council Chair and Council members. Bill thirty-eight twenty-three will amend certain regulations in Section Four of the county's Classification and Compensation Plan. Specifically, the bill will amend or add the following regulations. Regulation six oh one regarding acting capacity pay, promotions to a class with a higher pay grade, and beginner rates of compensation for internal candidate promotions. Regulation ten point zero two regarding higher class substitution pay. Regulation twenty-four point zero two regarding acting pay for non-married employees, and Regulation twenty-four point zero three regarding promotions for non-married employees.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from the members? Move right along to Bill thirty-nine dash twenty-three.
Yes, sir. Bill thirty-nine twenty-three implements the changes to the Classification and Compensation Plan as recommended by the Personnel and Salary Advisory Board or required as a result of labor negotiations for FY twenty twenty-four. Section one of the bill provides that pay schedule six, P, seven, and eight of the salary grades for classified employees are amended effective July one, twenty twenty-three. Section two of the bill provides that pay schedule seven and eight of the standard salary grades for classified employees are amended effective January one, twenty twenty-four. And section three of the bill amends pay grades for ten classifications in section two, the Classification and Compensation Plan, effective July one, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Any question, comments from the members? Ms. Coleman, is this your first time coming to see us?
I've been here a couple of times.
Have you really?
Yes, sir.
Are you sure?
Yes. Yes, she has.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all right, all right.
Mr. Chair, are you sure that you've been here?
I don't know. I just wonder, who am I? But, okay, you did a most excellent job today.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Julian Jones. I'm Julian Jones? Okay, I'm Julian Jones.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate you. Next, we'll move on to page fourteen, Bill forty-two dash twenty-three. Councilman Marks? Councilman Marks?
Very briefly, we have been working with the administration on this bill. Originally, it was more expansive, dealing with notification of public work projects. My understanding is the administration will be supporting an amendment that will simply say that the county council members are notified quarterly of major transportation and infrastructure projects in their district.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? Okay, great, we'll move on to page sixteen. Colonel Christopher Kelly?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I come before you on behalf of the Department, the administration, requesting approval for a five-year contract with Vislink LLC to provide annual preventative maintenance and support for the county's three helicopter downlink systems. This contract is not to exceed one hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars. The contractor will provide annual preventative maintenance and support for the county's three helicopter downlink systems to be installed in the county's helicopters. Each helicopter downlink system allows for real-time transmissions of airborne images and videos to various receiving sites throughout the county, creating a unified network that enables first responders to effectively communicate with one another. The proposed contract provides five years of additional preventative maintenance and support on top of the one-year maintenance that's included with our purchase agreement for a total of six years of support and preventative maintenance. The contractor will provide twenty-four-hour telephone and on-site technical support, break fix coverage, as well as on-site preventative maintenance.
Right. Any questions, comments from the members? Thank you very much, Colonel. Appreciate you being here. Page nineteen, Joy Schaefer, Department of Permits, Approval and Inspections. Ms. Schaefer, is this, is this your first time coming here? I thought so. Okay, well, welcome again.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, well, evening now, council members. The administration is requesting approval of five contracts to provide mowing, trimming, and related cleanup services to bring neglected properties throughout the county into compliance with the county code. The contracts are estimated to total one point eight seven five million for the entire five-year and four-month term. The county awarded the contracts through a competitive procurement process based on low bid from six bids received. Property cleanups utilize the Neglected Property Community Fund. These contracts will enhance our ability to further utilize these funds. The contracts are necessary to supplement our current pool of neglected property cleanup vendors, especially during this very busy grass mowing season. Approval of these contracts will also substantially improve our ability to provide prompt attention to cleanup of properties. There was a twenty percent, excuse me, twenty percent WME participation requirement which all five of the vendors met. One vendor is a minority-owned business, so they are prime in addition to meeting the twenty percent participation requirement for some contractors.
Thank you so much, Ms. Schaefer. I can tell you this service is very important to each and every one of us. When we have situations that we need something to be cleaned up, grass cut, what have you, and you and your organization, your department's been very responsive to that end, so we look forward to supporting the contract. We're happy to see you back. Don't stay away so long.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from the members? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Adam Whitlock will be very pleased.
Next, we'll move on to page twenty-four, James Benjamin.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Good to see you all. The administration is requesting approval on two contracts, one with MS Reporting LLC doing business as Irwin Reporting, and CRC Holdings, Inc., doing business as CRC Solomon, Inc., to provide court reporting services on an as-needed basis. Contractors will provide all-time material, labor, and incidentals necessary to perform court reporting services on an as-needed basis, including after-hours, weekends, and holidays. Court reporters will take verbatim records and hearings, depositions, and various other meetings as required. The contractors will ensure that all information is maintained in a safe and secure manner. Hearings and depositions may also, may involve various county government offices and departments, for example, the Office of Law, the Board of Appeals, the Office of the People's Council. Work would be equally assigned between the two contractors depending on availability. Each contract commences upon council approval, continues for one year, and will renew automatically for four additional one-year periods with the option to extend the initial term or any renewal term an additional one hundred and twenty days. The contracts do not specify a maximum compensation for the initial one-year term. The compensation for both contractors combined may not exceed seventy thousand for the entire five-year and four-month term, including the renewal and extension periods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benjamin. Any questions, comments from the members? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Moving right along to page twenty-eight, Ms. DeAndre Walker and Lauren Buckler. Have you been here before, Ms. Walker? This, this, this gentleman beside me said you had.
I have, I have been here. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Paradigm Software LLC for supporting maintenance of hardware and software, including preventive maintenance, repairs, updates, and upgrades to track and monitor and account for all of our solid waste tonnage, which is over eight hundred thousand tonnage we take through our three facilities a year, at the county's Eastern Sanitary Landfill, our central acceptance facility, and our Western Acceptance Facility. The contract commences on July first and continues for one year with renewals with nine additional one-year periods with the option to extend the initial term or any renewals an additional one hundred and eighty days. This contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the initial one-year term or the entire ten-year. However, compensation may not exceed the amount appropriated for these services for the entire contract. This system, which includes proprietary hardware and software, was installed at our Eastern and CAF and WAFF when the county assumed the operations control from the facilities from EMS back in twenty seventeen. The, this software, this upgrade to this software and this hardware will allow us to standardize our processes at the three facilities, allow us additional accounting and billing capacity. It also allows us to be more efficient in terms of our trucks. If they go to one location, you don't have to do a separate billing for the other two locations. It will sync up the three locations, so it's an upgrade in the services we're providing. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Well, we thank you very much. Any questions, comments from the members? Thank you very much. Ms. DeAndre Walker. Next, we'll have page thirty-four, Dr. Jennifer Lynch. Good evening.
The Department of Economic and Workforce Development is requesting to contract with CCBC to provide adult basic literacy skills and basic technology skill courses to build literacy skills for our residents. Classes will be held at the American Job Centers and in our Mobile Career Centers. And with this contract, we will be able to serve up to eighteen hundred residents per year. This contract, if, if approved, will continue through December twenty twenty-three with the option for four one-year extensions and a total value not to exceed six hundred one thousand four hundred dollars. CCBC has been the sole provider of standalone digital literacy services for close to twenty years and continues to be our strongest partner in both youth and adult workforce training programs. I hope you will extend support for this contract and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much, Dr. Lynch. Appreciate you being here. Moving on to page thirty-eight, Director Steve Lafferty.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council.
Good evening.
This is not my first time here. The administration is requesting approval to acquire perpetual conservation easement on approximately one hundred and forty point seven five seven acres of land for five hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars in District Four and the county's Rural Legacy, for the county's Rural Legacy Program. This purchase is from Argie Elizabeth Hills Trope on Long Neck Road in Glendon, and the property is currently zoned RC two. This acreage and this property has been acquired, is located in the Pony Run Rural Legacy Area, an area that's been very prolific and been able to bring properties into our conservation program. And it is an easement that will be granted to the Land Preservation Trust. The value is calculated approximately three thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars per acre for the easement in accordance with the code's formula provisions, and we request your approval for this acquisition.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Lafferty. Move on to page forty-two, Thomas Joseph. Department of the Aging and with Laura Riley.
Good evening, County Council. I'm filling in for Laura Riley, she'll be here on Monday. The administration is requesting approval of a retroactive contract with Charm City Run Events to provide race management and timing services for the Department of Aging's annual five K one-mile walk. The contract commenced May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three and continues until May twenty-four, twenty twenty-four and will renew automatically for four additional one-year periods. Compensation may not exceed seven thousand dollars for the initial one-year term and thirty-five thousand dollars for the entire five-year term, including all the renewal periods. This contract was competitively bid and Charm City was the low bidder on the.
Thank you very much. Any question, comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Tokes.
Thank you. I, I don't have a direct question for you, but I just wanted to talk to Ms. Rogers for a moment. I see that Ms. Riley was not here, Mr. Gutwold was not here. So I just wanted to thank Ms. Rogers for finally allowing agency heads to take a vacation. So thank you, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Councilmember, but I would say we hope that all of you will come to the run. It's a lot of fun for we seniors.
Thank you very, very much. Let's see, moving right on to page forty-six, Kevin Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Councilmembers. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Language Line Services Incorporated to provide interpretation services for county agencies on an as-needed basis. This contract will commence upon council approval and will continue through December thirty-one of twenty twenty-four and will renew automatically for two additional one-year periods. Compensation may not exceed the amount appropriated for these services, which is estimated to be approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the initial term period. The contractor will provide over-the-phone video remote document translation and localization, that is, adapting digital content such as websites, online applications, et cetera, to a specific region's language, as well as the ability to provide in-person interpretation services on an as-needed basis. This was a cooperative procurement of a competitively bid contract and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We, do we have a question?
I have one question, Director Reed. Is this all languages?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not just Spanish only?
No, it is not.
Okay. We have several we need translated.
Yeah, our heavy, it's Spanish, Russian, those are the heaviest hitters, Korean, Burmese as well, that, that we see most frequently come through.
Well, it's very, it's a very important service when people call nine-one-one and they want help and we're able to reach out to the language line and provide a service for a community, you know, translation that we couldn't possibly prepare for other than this service because they handle just about every dialect that you can imagine that calls and they'll, they'll be able to connect somebody to translate. So it's very important. It's yes, Ms. Rogers?
Councilmember, I'll tell, Language Line is the national leader and has a capability of translating almost any language. Social Security uses Language Line, State of Maryland during my tenure there, and also my tenure with Social Security. So they're capable of addressing whatever language need that we have.
Thank you very much, Director Reed. And then we move on to, says Lawrence Richardson. Thank you, sir. Department of Health and Human Services. Prevention, Detection, and Treatment Services for Cancer. Spoiler alert.
Good evening, Chairman Jones, members of the council. The administration is seeking approval for nine contracts to provide cancer prevention, early detection, and diagnosis treatment services for low-income residents. The federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention in the state of Maryland have awarded funds to Baltimore County Department of Health for the purpose of prevention, early detection, and diagnosis. The Health Department Cancer Program contracts, contracts with local providers to provide clinical services in accordance with the CDC and the state of Maryland mandated standardized requirements. The nine provider contracts were established to allow customers the option to choose from a list of providers located throughout Baltimore County. All nine providers have been reviewed and approved by the county law office. I will make note that the reason is, you don't have the notes for this, we were working diligently with two of the providers to have the contracts fully executed. We will have those fully executed by the end of this week, but we wanted to continue these life-sustaining services. We were also mandated by the state to continue the services. So of the nine providers, we have Advanced Radiology, Chase Brexton Health Services, Stephanie Dunbar LLC, Eastside Anesthesia, Doctors Gabay, Feldman, and Pearlman, Life Bridge Community, doing business as Homewood Gastro and Tetral Associates, Northwest Hospital, University of Maryland St. Joseph Medical Group, and Sinai Hospital of Baltimore. Those are the contracted providers. The initial term will start upon council approval and will have ten one-year renewals.
All right, thank you very much. Director Richardson, any questions, comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much. Moving right on along to page fifty, Nancy Carver, Deputy Chief.
The Testing Services for Certified Multilingual Translator. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Alta Language Services, Inc., to provide testing services for county employees and prevent potential new hires to determine if their oral and written multi-language skills qualify them to serve as multilingual certified employees with translation abilities. The contract commences with county approval, continues through May eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and will renew automatically for four additional one-year periods with an option to extend the initial term or any renewal term for additional one hundred and twenty days. The contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the initial approximate ten-month term or for the entire approximate five-year and two-month term, including the renewal and the extension periods. Compensation may not exceed the amount appropriate for these services for the entire contract term. The office advised that estimated compensation totals seventy-five thousand for the entire approximate five-year and two-month term, including renewal and extension periods.
All right. Any questions, comments from the members? Thank you very, very much, Ms. Carver. Oh, there's one right there.
Just, just a comment, Council-
Just a comment, council members, this is an additional service to supplement what we're doing with Language Line. This is something that the police department started as a part of their MOU, and then there were requests from across the county to be able to certify our own employees who can provide translation services in real time. It's modeled after Montgomery County program, and this is the certification part, so employees do have the ability to step forward to say that they will assist with translation services, particularly from the police department side, you know, on-demand kind of services. And Councilmember Urteal, back to the Language Line piece, we have to try to expand our capacity, but while working in Montgomery County, Language Line served two hundred and forty-two languages in Montgomery County that were subject to particularly health services. Just wanted you to know that the expansive capacity of Language Line. So this is something new that we're adding this year to expand from the police department to the entire enterprise.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Chair. Councilmember Patoka?
Quick question. So existing county employees are eligible to take this, sort of, they're eligible to get this certification?
Yes, and also new hires, upon, if the physician requires a second language, the new hires would take the exam, and if they pass, they'd be certified and then go on to the rest of the recruitment process.
And are council, is council staff eligible to get certified?
They are, they would be as well.
We have bilingual staff.
Right, we can discuss with you if the certification process, because our goal is to be in compliance with Language Access. Language Access says that recipients of service of any kind will be able to, equitably be able to understand what services are available. So I would liken customer service or constituent services to council staff as well.
Yeah, and we get quite a bit of constituent requests from much of the, from some of the Hispanic portions of our community, and we're able to service that, and I didn't know if the certification is a beneficial asset for our staff members.
Right, we're happy to talk with you about how we're going to implement it, and I would suggest it, yes, because as members of the community contact you and want to be able to understand services and be able to have access, that's the requirement of the law. So I would suggest, yes, because they are county employees.
And we outreach to many of the Hispanic churches, and so with that, you know, if they do have constituent services, they do come to our office because they understand that there's, there's less of a language barrier than there might be in other parts of the county.
Happy, happy to work with each of your staffs with respect to this new provision, because our goal is to ensure equitable access to services and the understanding of services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, page fifty-four. Lieutenant Amanda Wenzel. Stryker Sales.
Good evening. I'm standing in for Bureau Chief Nance tonight. The Baltimore County Fire Department is requesting a contract with Stryker Sales, LLC, for the purpose of providing annual onsite preventative maintenance of forty-four Lucas Three mechanical CPR devices. This request, once approved, will be effective for three years. In no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractor exceed the sum of one thousand ninety-six, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, eighty-six dollars and thirty-three cents during the entire term of the agreement. Funds will be encumbered annually through the Fire Department's operating budget cost center, one-six-zero-four-zero-zero. The contract potentially services all residents in Baltimore County. The devices are used by the Fire Department to deliver lifesaving mechanical CPR to citizens in medical emergencies.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Is this your first time coming here?
It is my first.
Ah, we got one! Thank you so much. You did a most excellent job. Thank you so very much for joining us today.
Thank you.
Make sure you come back and see us again. We appreciate you. See you there? I've been vindicated. Okay, moving right along to someone who is certainly no stranger, someone that we hear an awful lot about, Ms. Deb Shindel. Deborah Shindel. Proper man. Page fifty-seven.
Good evening, Councilwoman Chair and members of the council. Thank you for your time tonight. The administration is asking for an approval of a contract with Associated Building Maintenance Company, Inc., Brooks and Brooks Service, Inc., MSP Superior Services, Inc., Multi-Curb, Inc., for custodial and day porter services throughout Baltimore County. The request for the proposed, proposal section services into three custodial services regions and the day porter locations. It is noteworthy that two of these new vendors are new to the county for custodial services. The selected contractors will assist in surveying almost two hundred and thirty buildings with unique needs. The vendors will maintain thirty-nine day porter locations and sixty-eight custodial service buildings. It is noteworthy also to mention that we have fifty in-house staff that clean for, who are Baltimore County employees, who clean twenty-four sites and six day porter sites, and including roving crews. The total compensation paid to the contractor will be an estimated yearly sum of seven million, seven hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighty-six, fifty-six. The total compensation shall not exceed the total contract sum of thirty-five million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents during the life of this contract, including all the renewals. This is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. The MBE goal on this was thirty percent, and two of the selected vendors that are primes are also MBE vendors. I am willing to take any questions at this time that you may have on this contract.
Any questions, comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much, Ms. Shindel. Moving right along to the next one.
You got it, thank you.
Page sixty-one.
The administration is requesting approval of a purchase order for Building Concepts, LLC, in the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy, to provide concrete and masonry services for the COVID-nineteen Memorial Lake Roland Park. This is a purchase order that went out as a low bid, competitive bid, with an MB goal of twenty percent. There were three vendors on this contract, and once this contract is approved, we hope to have, our goal is to have, I should say, the project complete by or before September eighth of this year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shindel. Any questions, comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Shindel, are there any renderings of what the wall will look like?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. We can gladly share them if you'd like.
If you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely.
September's going to be here in no time, so I'd love to see what that wall looks like.
Mr. Chair, may I be acknowledged, sir?
Yes, go right ahead.
Councilmember Patoka, this is a little different than, than the renderings which was approved, that the artists who developed and designed everything, the concrete piece came in as a part of the sidewalks and the other area that will support the wall, but we most definitely can go back to the renderings that were approved maybe a year?
Oh, it was about a year ago.
A year ago, but we needed to then come back for the concrete part, which
I see.
clearly is just where it's going to be, so it's a park. But we'll get those back out, pull those back out, and provide updates because Councilmember Urteal and Councilmember Young were not with us when the actual memorial design was, was presented and approved. So we'll, we'll most definitely do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Next, next item.
The administration is requesting approval on a contract for Kaplan Brothers, Inc., to provide glass replacement and repair at the public safety building on the facade of the facility. In no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractor exceed the sum of the council-approved appropriation amount. This is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. The estimated amount is three million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine in the life of the total contract. That includes all of the labor, the tools, and the equipment and installation and the repairs for all of the glass on the public safety as needed. As you know, all four facades are, are glass. This was a competitive bid and was awarded to the best qualified and experienced, and there was, because it is very, very unique in its territory as a contract, is a, it's a niche in the, in the industry, there was only one vendor that bid on this contract.
Chair, Councilmember Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Shindel, this, this was, what year was the appropriation in the capital budget for this?
We carry an appropriation every year in the capital budget as a line item for this particular task.
So did this come out of a bulk account?
Yes, usually it comes out of the contingency component of, of the bulk account on our ten thirty-six, which is signed to property management.
I see, so, I mean, that's a, three million dollars seems to be a significant amount of money not to carry its own line item in the budget, but rather be extracted from a bulk account.
So, just so I can explain the contract, it doesn't mean we use that amount every year. What we do is, every year, we evaluate and determine how many have broken. I don't know if you're familiar enough with the building, but it sways. And so not every year do we need to replace all, you know, several glass panes. We will, you know, try to make it, we evaluate it every year and determine, okay, we have five, it can wait, but we need to have enough money in the contract in case there is some catastrophic event where we need to have many of the glass panes replaced. That's why we carry that kind of amount contract, so that we have the ability to fix it immediately when needed.
I guess what I'm getting at is, I understand the need, I didn't know the building swayed.
Yeah, it does.
But that's, that's, that's a significant issue. I just wonder for transparency's sake, you know, if we have an item that can, can be up to three million dollars, should it be listed as its own line item in the capital budget?
Yes.
And, and actually, I think in the perfect world, if it's, if it's, if it's allocated in each of the six years of the capital budget, should there be, let's say, for example, if we're going to spend a million dollars in year one, and half a million in year two, and half a million in year three, and half a million in year four, and five and six, should it not be allocated and also identified in the capital budget as a line item?
And we definitely can do that as our request, because what we do in property management is we submit our long capital list every year. I'm glad to carry a line item and have, you know, the amount that we think we're going to spend, so that you can see it as a separate line item.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I be acknowledged, please?
Sure.
Councilmember Patoka, clearly we agree with transparency by all means, but the challenge with this situation is, from year to year, we don't know what the amount is going to be. So clearly you can put an estimated amount each year to, to carry over, but that assessment, because of the sensitivity with that building and the fact that it sways, and this, this year, I believe the issue was around that utility building as well, the red one.
Oh, the red cube had a separate issue that, yes, ma'am, we had to address as an emergency repair.
Right, and that isn't necessarily always the case, but for transparency, of course, we can, we can do that, because once it comes out of the bulk account, you can establish a separate account so you can see it, but it's kind of difficult to allocate. It's going to be a million this year, five hundred thousand in twenty-five, so on, but we'll do the very best that we can, because they have to assess what's happening.
I understand, I was just using that for example, and I just wonder if the building is swaying, is it something long-term that we should start to look at another direction, similar to what we did, you know, we just purchased a building for six million dollars? Should we consider getting away from a building that sways?
So if I may, it is actually designed, because of the height, to sway a little bit. It's a unique design, it is a curtain, I call it, we call it a curtain. It's a glass curtain around the building, and so because of the height of it, it actually was designed to give a little, because if it didn't, you would then have true catastrophic issues. You know, something has to give when you're that tall. So it actually is just designed to actually sway a little bit, to go with the, with the earth, rather than being a hard, not moving, and then when you do have an event with high winds, it would cause catastrophic issues.
Understood. I understand your dilemma, I hope you'll understand the concerns I'm sharing, and I'll just close with, you know, Frank Lloyd Wright's buildings were absolutely beautiful, but they were maintenance nightmares.
Yes, they were, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
Completely understand.
Councilman Catch?
Deb, with, this was a Blue Cross Blue Shield building.
Yes, sir.
I was going to say that. Did they stick us with this?
Did they stick us? Okay, well, I don't think they stuck us with the building. It, you know, it's an older building, it has a unique design to it, as you probably know, and I, you know, council, Councilman Patoka is, is right on, it was a very unique, cutting-edge design for the time it was built, but would you build that to today's standard? Absolutely not, because it has some issues, just like Frank Lloyd's, that you would not necessarily do. And so it is in need of some repairs that we, you will, and you probably saw in our line items this year, it is getting a lot of love, it is an older building, it needs some love, but you're right, it, it's just the design would not be today.
What, what would you estimate we spend each year, on the average, replacing the windows in the building?
Oh, um, I would probably say, depending on the year, about seven hundred and fifty thousand or less, I can check. Why don't I do and run you a number of what we do? Sometimes it's none, other years, it's, there's been high winds and a lot of movement in the curtain, and we do, we have to pay. So I can definitely run some numbers for you and give you the last four years, three or four years, if you'd like.
Has the county considered hiring an engineering company to, to see if we could not use glass, or is there some other material that could be used instead? I mean, I, I've seen the, in London, the huge glass building, the Shard, and I don't think they have this problem.
Yeah, the curtain, so it is, it's funny you say that, but it's a very valid question. We've actually talked about that in the prior, probably six years ago, at looking at what we could do to, to remove that curtain, so that the structure itself stays, and start looking at, you know, is it worth us doing that? And so that has been somewhat of an internal conversation we have been thinking about over the last couple of years. Yes, sir.
Well, you can sell it back to Blue Cross Blue Shield.
We sure could.
And then we'll take over their new.
That would be nice. Yes, sir, but I can, I can get you the cost in the last three years, so that you know, because some years it's very minimal, and other times it is pretty intense, yeah, we just need to have it there in case we need it. And, and they don't, so you just know, it doesn't crack and fall, the curtain keeps it contained, but we want to replace it as quickly as we can, obviously, because the system itself will not fall out. but we want to replace it as quickly as we can, obviously, because the system itself will not fall out. That, you know, no glass is going to plunge onto the ground. It has a curtain to kind of hold it in. It's just the structural cracks from swaying a little bit cause it, and that's why we replace the panes. Welcome.
Okay. Moving right along, one more. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Shindel, good to see you again. I'm going to try my best to word this appropriately, because I'm not trying to get into a fight or get into an argument or drag anybody through the mud here. How long was this line item in the capital budget? How many years?
Oh, I want to say, and I'd have to go back and look, I would probably say it's been about five years. We've carried her longer, I can only contest from when I've been here as chief, and that's about five years. We try to keep a line item.
So I'm just trying to, my frustration with the budget process this year was, one, it was my first time going through the county budget process, but the capital budget perplexed me the most out of operating, mainly because if we approve a capital budget, there's a capital budget that's presented. There are multiple projects in it, and we know the dollar amount in which that we've set that is this year's capital budget. If you add up all the projects that are in the capital budget, it far exceeds the money that's allocated, meaning that there are multiple projects that are line items in the queue, over and over and over again. Based on our process, we do have no way of knowing which projects are going to be funded versus which ones aren't necessarily. And in terms of having a process that we can engage with or trying to plan things out, as Councilmember Patoka was trying to lay out, the way in which you were explaining it is completely impossible based on the way that we do our capital budget. I say "we" collectively, because it's not one department or one agency. I am voicing my frustration, because I wasn't going to say anything, except for the fact we got into a discussion about the capital budget, and I still don't have answers in terms of how we can effectively plan and appropriate and budget when it comes to the capital needs for the county, when we have consistently, over and over again, these line items for projects that don't have funding in the capital budget for them. So I'm going to leave it at that as a statement, followed by a small question, so thank you.
Okay. We ready to move forward with fencing?
Yes, sir. I am. Thank you. The administration is requesting approval for a contract with P&amp;H Fencing, LLC and Sparks Quality Fencing Company for fencing services throughout the county-owned and operated facility. In no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractor exceed the sum of county council-approved appropriation among the, during this term of the contract. This is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. This has a competitive bid, and it was based, awarded on best competition, best qualified, and experienced. There was a 20% MBE per task goal, which is very nice to have. There were two bidders on this contract, and both obviously are awarded. Sparks is noteworthy a prime and an MBE firm. And I can take any questions that you may have.
Any questions, comments from the members? Thank you very, very much, Deb Shindel. Next, we'll bring up Ms. Faith Thomas, Chief of Real Estate Compliance. She's been here before. Thomas, how are you doing today?
I'm doing very well, thank you.
Good.
Mr. Chair, and good evening, councilmembers.
All right, we have page 71, 71, 71, page 77, and page 77.
Yes, so I am here first with the Windsor Mill project. The administration is requesting approval of three contracts to acquire land and easement access, spanning in total approximately 0.141 acres for $27,427 for the construction of a sidewalk along Windsor Mill Road in Gwin Oak. Fiscal matter 17 is a contract with Lorraine V Carrington de Cruz for $9,841 for land that approximates 0.006 acres and easement access at 0.018 acres located at 6507 Windsor Mill Road. FM 18 is a contract with Najah B. Mohammed for $10,848 for land approximate 0.038 acres and an easement access of 0.044 acres located at 6740 Windsor Mill Road. FM 19 is a contract with Wambua Kiyoko for $6,738 for land approximating 0.020 acres and easement access of 0.015 acres located at 6713 Windsor Mill Road. The properties are zoned DR 5.5. The acquired land will be used for highway widening areas, and the easements will be used for temporary construction areas, drainage and utility easements, or revertable slope easements necessary to retain and support the highway and/or adjacent property. Each contract's compensation takes into account any adverse impacts to site improvements and/or proximity damage. For 6507 Windsor Mill Road, the county staff appraiser completed an appraisal of the property effective January 5, 2023, recommending a value of $9,841. The county review, the county's review appraiser concurred with the appraisal, recommending the respective amount as just compensation. The property owner accepted the county's offer. The purchase price includes $682 to compensate for adverse impacts to certain site improvements and $4,740 to compensate for proximity damages. Additionally, the county will reinstall or replace, as necessary, other impacted site improvements. 6740 Windsor Mill Road appraisal was effective October 2022, and the staff appraiser recommended a value of $10,848 with which the county's review appraiser concurred, recommending the respective amount as just compensation. The Office of Law, Real Estate Compliance Division advised that the property owner accepted the offer. The purchase price includes $1,360 to compensate for adverse impacts to certain site improvements, and the county will reinstall or replace, as necessary, other impacted site improvements. 6713 Windsor Mill Road's property appraisal was effective January 18, 2023. The staff appraiser recommended a value of $6,738 with which the county's review appraiser concurred and recommended that amount as just compensation. The property owner accepted the county's offer. The purchase price includes $638 to compensate for adverse impacts to certain site improvements, and the county will reinstall or replace, as necessary, other impacted site improvements.
It took here the last two properties?
All right, well, let's, when you said, "Did it take care of..."
No, I heard you, during the Windsor Mill, what about Beechwood and North Point?
Okay, that's a different project. Should I go on to those? Okay, sure, I'm happy to do so.
Okay.
The next project is the Fisher Road relief replacement for 8108 Beechwood Road and 4010 Old North Point Road. The administration is requesting approval of two contracts to acquire easement access spanning in total approximately 0.311 acres for $38,877 for the replacement of a sanitary sewer in Dundalk. Fiscal matter 20 is a contract with William and Nino LLC for $9,608 for easement access located at 8108 Beechwood Road. FM 21 is a contract with the same contractor for $29,269 for easement access located at 4010 Old North Point Road. The easements will be used for temporary construction areas and drainage and utility easements. The count, for 8108 Beechwood Road, the county staff appraiser completed an appraisal of the property effective June 15, 2020, recommending a value of $9,608 with which the senior review appraiser concurred. The property owner accepted the county's offer, and the staff appraiser determined that the site's significant improvements will not be impacted by the taking. However, the county will reinstall or replace, as necessary, impacted site improvements. For 4010 Old North Point Road, the county staff appraiser completed an appraisal of the property effective June 15, 2020, recommending a value of $29,269 which the county's review appraiser concurred, recommending the respective amount as just compensation. The property owner accepted the county's offer, and the staff appraiser determined that the site's significant improvements will not be impacted by the taking, but the county will reinstall or replace, as necessary, impacted site improvements. And the purpose of the Fisher Road relief and replacement sanitary sewer project is to separate flow from the American Yeast Corporation until it reaches the interceptor in North Point Road. The new sewer line will follow Universal Trade Drive north to Fisher Road, where it will turn west and cross the Norfolk Southern Railroad track and I-695 near the existing 12-inch, 16-inch sewer crossings. DPWT advised that the county is separating the flow to provide a better level of service for all properties connected in this area. Separating flow will provide a more efficient means of cleaning and maintaining the public infrastructure without disrupting industrial operations. DPWT further advised that the county has increased the capacity of the Lynn Hurst and Beechwood Road pumping stations upstream of the proposed infrastructure improvements, which has affected the available capacity of the downstream collection system. The proposed relief sewer will provide additional capacity to accommodate the increased size of the upstream pumping stations.
Well, thank you so much. Are there any questions, comments from the members?
Mr. Chair, just very, just very quickly, if I can, just request of Ms. Rogers or perhaps Mr. Kroner, can I get DPWT to brief me on the project in general? I'm not calling into question the purchase of these easements. Ms. Thomas, thank you for your work. It's just that I'd like to know a little bit more about the project itself, so if someone from the administration can reach out to our office and set up a WebEx or something like that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Randall. Are there any additional questions or comments from any of the members before we adjourn?
I have one.
Yes.
About miscellaneous business correspondence. This is for Director Reed and Madam Ayo. We bought a drone, apparently, for DPW that we didn't bid. I'm not sure why we didn't bid it, but I'd like to talk about that offline. It's a Chinese drone. The software seems awful, awfully expensive, and I just don't know why we're making $100,000 purchases without a competitive bid. This sticks out to me as something that doesn't pass the smell test to me.
Sure, we're happy to discuss. We'll research it, but often the things that are miscellaneous are items that were defined under certain classifications that don't typically come to council, but we're happy to look at that particular purchase to just make sure.
Just concerned that it's hidden in this process, and we're paying a lot of money for things that, we don't have a lot, you know, I can't get money for things I need, and we're overspending, I feel like, on this particular thing.
We're happy to research it and get back with you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't think it's a drone. $100,000? I bought a drone, sat home, and it was fun when I first had it. It's really nice. It works. It's like a, I forget the name of it, but be willing to sell it to the county for a small fee. It flies. I bought extra batteries. I bought a nice case for it.
Can you guys discuss the size of your drones in private while we wrap this meeting up? Mr. Chair, just a suggestion?
Anything else? Nope. All right, thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening.